This regular meeting of May 9, 2022 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Prohaska.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sancy.
Whitman.
Here.
Now we go to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 11th as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 11th as submitted. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries. And that moves us to a few board salutes.
I have a board salute. Board salute goes out to Rainbow Oil, Quick Stop Dubuque, and the Dubuque Fighting Saints for their support of the Clear the Lift campaign, which collects the school supplies to support our schools and students. The first event of its kind for the saints, the donation will directly provide supplies to our classrooms. It also served to raise awareness and goodwill of our outstanding schools and educators. Thanks to these sponsors and the many who donated to the supplies to the cause. We look forward to making this a growing annual effort.
Thank you, Mr. Prohaska.
I have one. A board salute goes to the Washington Middle Robotics Team, which competed in the Midwest Shed Aquarium ROV tournament this weekend. The Wahoah Blue Team, made up of 7th and 8th graders, came in second overall in first in both their engineering presentation and their marketing display. The Wahoah Gray Team, made up of 6th graders, came in third overall. And middle schools from Illinois and Indiana did an awesome job representing Washington this weekend, so great work to all who were involved.
Thank you.
You know, as board members, we don't take for granted the incredible work of our district communication team. So I'm delighted to say congratulations from all of us to the district's communication team, which recently won 13 state-level awards in the annual Iowa School Public Relations Association Communication Contest, which recognizes outstanding school communication in Iowa. Each entry is evaluated and scored independently by school communication professionals in other state chapters of the National School Public Relations Association. This is amazing. At the highest level, the district received three blue and gold awards, recognizing the best entries in the state, and receiving the perfect score of 5 out of 5 in each area of the scoring group. The district also received 10 Awards of Excellence for various entries in public engagement, writing, special purpose project, advertising, and video categories. From all of us on the board, congratulations to the district communications team on this incredible recognition.
Awesome. Thank you. So that moves us to a public hearing on a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. And Mr. Kelleher will be giving us an amendment of the current budget.
I'm asking you to approve the amendment for our budget for this fiscal year in two areas. First of all is the total support services area. The reason for this adjustment is some of it has to do with supply chain issues. Our bus order last year did not come in before June 30th, so it got paid for in this fiscal year. Plus, we're anticipating and hoping that this year's budget bus order will come in this fiscal year in June, so it's kind of doubling up of purchases for buses. So that's part of the reason, along with some ESSR expenditures, that we need to increase the support services area. The second piece has to do with the other expenditures area, and that has to do with our refinancing of our debt that we did in January. We refinanced about a little over $9 million bond, and we had not put that in original projections when we did the budget of 16 months ago. So we weren't planning on that, but our financial advisor had let us know that to save interest, we should do that, so that debt payment is an expense in that category that had not been budgeted. So those are the reasons we want you to increase the amendment, do an amendment for the budget for last year, or for the current year, sorry.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget amendment and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget amendment and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now it's open for public comments. Seeing none.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget amendment for the fiscal 2021-2022 year as published.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt a budget amendment for the fiscal year 2021-2022 as published. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Anyone wishing to address the board can do so at this time. We ask that you come up to the microphone, state your full name and your connection to the district, and you have the three-minute window of time to share your comments.
Taxpayer. Don't know how else to put it. I'm questioning, pay attention, and I'm going to start trying to come to more meetings. The public outcry about Sutton Pool not being opened this summer, and in the same news week, there's discussion about closing Jefferson. They're kind of in the same area, right? So they're talking about having to bus kids to Flora Pool up on the West End. I would expect that's what would happen with the Jefferson kids. Is the enrollment down that far in Jefferson? I mean, the enrollment's going down in Dubuque, period. Though we keep throwing money at the buildings like there's no end. I tend to sound a little snarky because I'm a taxpayer. And a lot of taxpayers don't stand up and say much of anything because they can't or they won't. So I have a lot to say. I'm just going to start with Sutton Pool is going to be closed, and Jefferson is being talked about being closed. There's $10 million a year with the 1% sales tax, right? I'm just, that's $100 million the past 10 years. That was supposed to be the sunset tax that wasn't, that didn't sunset. It's now going to be, what, 2030? Before it maybe sunsets? So meanwhile, the enrollment in Dubuque schools is going down. We're throwing tons of money at the schools. We're closing Jefferson. That's on a side of town that probably should be served. And I guess I challenge you to think about what I just said. And I've had a conversation with Mr. Reingans probably, what, six months ago, eight months ago? And have been very busy in business since. But one more thing. With the taxes that we've been paying, the 1%, I would think somewhere along my tax, property taxes would have gone down. They didn't. They don't. So all of that, please think about it. I'll be back.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that, oh, we got that.
Sorry. I had to stand up and say a couple nice things about you all. So this is School Board Recognition Month, and so those of you who are here regularly, as well as those who, you know, read in the TH know that our elected officials, who are volunteers, at the heart of it, put in many, many hours to make really tough decisions every month. And this year especially has been difficult, as we've been torn with making decisions in a pandemic situation that really none of us were experts in, or there's not really a track record for. So I want to express my gratitude. I'll have another chance to do that in a month. It'll be my last board meeting, but for each of you for being daring enough to run for and serve in these roles. It is not a job for the faint of heart, and we do have lots of difficult decisions to make and often opposing views on any given issue. So I personally appreciate it, and I hope the community at large appreciates. Whether they agree or disagree with you on a certain issue, the put yourself out there, make decisions, and be leaderships in our community. So I have, in the last decade, had an opportunity to work with some fantastic board members, including this board as seated today. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of the 2,000 employees, the 10,400 students, and the 70,000 people in the Dubuque School District for your willingness to take on this difficult task. And as form of great payment, I have a certificate for each of you.
All expense paid.
All expense paid certificate.
Thank you. Thanks, Stan.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Stan. Thanks. I think we're all happy to be serving this district, so we appreciate the recognition and getting this opportunity. So thanks, everyone.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item that a board member wishes to have removed? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to our facilities and support services committee report from Ms. Whitman with lots of motions for us tonight.
Yes, we have lots and lots of motions, so I'll just go through all of them. First one is, I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the bus driver and bus attendant employees as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the bus driver and bus attendant employees as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the food service employees as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the food service employees as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the secretary and administrative assistant employees as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the secretary and administrative assistant employees as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the truck driver and mechanic employees as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the truck driver and mechanic employees as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
One more group. I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the non-bargaining employees as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the non-bargaining employees as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
All those came in pretty much at what we did for the others, right?
Yeah, so all of the employee groups are at 3%, some are at 3.1% because it's a strange breakdown. So again, for those of you in the audience, these are all gone through at length in our subcommittee meetings the week before, which are also public meetings, so always invited to attend those. So they all are in that fine line of about 3%. It is, in today's market, with workforce on the lower side, but it is beyond what the state has given us for supplemental state aid or allowable growth. So it really represents the goodwill of the district to pay the best we can, to have the best employees, knowing there are constraints with what we're allowed to spend from per student at the state level.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, now I move on to something else. I move the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans and specifications form of contract and estimate of total cost for the furniture, fixtures, and equipment bid package number one for the senior high school Phase II project, and set the date and time and location as June 6, 2022, at 4:30 p.m. at the Dubuque Community School District at 2300 Cheney Road in Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorization the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the furniture, fixtures, and equipment bid package number one for the senior high school Phase II project, and set the time, date, time, and location as June 6, 2022, at 4:30 p.m. at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board, I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with Origin Design Company for professional services for the Eisenhower Elementary School Mechanical Replacement Project in the amount of $182,500.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Origin Design Company for professional services for the Eisenhower Elementary School Mechanical Replacement Project in the amount of $182,500. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the food and nutrition meal changes for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the food and nutrition meal charges for the 2022-2023 school year. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And at our meeting, Kevin Kelleher reviewed the 10-year facility plan, so I move the Board of Education approve the 10-year facilities plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board approved the 10-year facilities plan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion, oh, sorry, any opposed? That motion carries. All right. A lot of things that we talked about summarized in those motions, so thank you, Ms. Whitman. That brings us to Educational Programs and Policy Committee report from Ms. Bradley.
Thank you. We, as you might imagine, the meeting is divided between the educational program section and the policy section, and three things came before the board during the educational programming portion. The first is, we were delighted to hear from Beth McGory, who's the Director of Donor Relations at St. Mark's Community Center. She shared with the committee about the Apples for Students School Supply Program. This community has been richly blessed by the work St. Mark's has done. It provides school supplies to children in need in the community, has served 28,000 students over 20 years, and just this past year, in 2021, St. Mark's provided the backpacks that are full of school supplies for 3,000 Dubuque Community School District students in our five Title I elementary schools. And just to show the dimension of their concern for children, they have also now expanded into serving children in the East Dubuque District and the Western Dubuque public system. So they are doing powerful work. To my thinking, what they're saying to children is, we're providing you with safety, belonging, and a sense of preparation for learning. No child then needs to go to school that first day of school, or the second or whenever, without a book pack and a book pack full of school supplies. And that's a tremendous contribution to our kids. So we thank Beth for sharing at a meeting, and we thank all of St. Mark's, present and past, everybody who's made that program possible. Wonderful. Second thing that came before us was from Executive Director of Elementary Education, Lisa Tabacorst. She brought a request to the board to approve the donation of LEAD 21 curriculum materials to some of our community partners. For those of you who may not know, the district has just finished an exhaustive study of elementary language arts, and in the process, it's following 12 or 14 years of a program called LEAD 21, which has been our main curriculum materials for instruction in elementary language arts, which is reading, writing, spelling, and listening, speaking, lots of the expressive communication skills of language arts. And so what do we do with the LEAD 21 materials, which are being replaced by the new adoption, which we're delighted to have happen? Well, Ms. Tabacorst brought us the recommendation that they be donated to our community partners. So offers have been made to St. Mark's, the Dream Center, Community Y, and the Boys and Girls Club. So those materials will still have meaning and purpose and usefulness for our elementary children who are served in those wonderful community programs. Thirdly and lastly, Julie Lang, who's the Director of Digital Literacy, asked the Board for approval of a program called iReady, Assessment Software. It's a system that focuses for kindergarten through 8th grade students in the areas of math and reading, and it will bring all online diagnostic tools. We have many now. We could give you a list of the various ones that are used and have been used for diagnostic purposes in reading and math. iReady will now replace all or most of those and actually bring that online diagnostic information into one dashboard. All of that data will be housed in one place and available to students and teachers diagnostically so that we will be able now to have that tool to help teachers to use the diagnostic information in reading and math to program for our students' needs. Where are they strong? Where are they not? And we program where they're not. So we're excited about that as well, and thank Julie for bringing that forward. Then we dealt with four policies, three of which were approved during the consent agenda. They were severe weather disaster, severe weather disaster policy, teaching about religions, and advertising in schools. The fourth policy, acceleration, had good discussion. It will come back to us again June 7th after more conversation and some possible revision. So that was a long meeting, a meeting where we got to talk about lots of things and look at programming for our students in a way that should be very, very helpful going forward. In a moment, I'll bring you a motion, bring the board a motion regarding the donation, but in the meantime, I'd like to just invite anyone who wishes to attend that meeting. It's not televised, but it's available to the public, as Mr. Reingans said before, and that will be on June 7th at 4:30 in the boardroom. So anyone who'd like to attend, love to have you.
Thank you.
Now, my motion regarding the donation of the LEAD 21 English Language Arts materials. I move that the Board of Education approve the donation of LEAD 21 curriculum materials to community partners.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation of LEAD 21 curriculum materials to community partners. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, thank you, Ms. Bradley. That brings us to new business.
I move the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing Marshallese Constitution Day and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing Marshallese Constitution Day and authorize the President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the Board. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the citizens of the Republic of the Marshall Islands celebrate their Constitution Day on May 1st each year to commemorate the day 43 years ago when a new constitution was adopted and status as an independent republic was achieved. And whereas the Dubuque Community School District and our greater community benefit from a very vibrant Marshallese community that is rich with tradition. And whereas celebration of Marshallese Constitution Day in the Marshall Islands would traditionally be focused on island culture with games of tug-of-war, husking a coconut, and canoe racing, and in the United States is celebrated with basketball, softball, and volleyball tournaments. And whereas the observance of Marshallese Constitution Day in the United States is held on the three-day Memorial Weekend, and the Marshallese community will recognize it with the celebration open to all members of the Dubuque community. Now therefore, I, Kate Parks, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim May 1st as a celebration of Marshallese Constitution Day. Signed this ninth day of May, 2022. So I will sign it.
Do we know how many students we have from the Marshall Islands, approximately?
Yes. Do I? No.
Off the top of your head, Stan?
We, you know, it's a significant population. In almost every single one of our buildings, we have Marshallese students, so I certainly can get you that number, but I don't have.
Sure. I know that they bring richness and culture that we treasure.
So we'll look forward to the celebration coming up Memorial Day weekend. All right. So, board member or administrative issues?
Reminder that we're at that time of year. Commencement is about three weeks away. So this year, it is May 28th. We alternate every year who gets to go first. So Hempstead will be at 10:00 a.m., Dazzle Field and Senior will be at 3:00 p.m., also at Dazzle Field. We need that break in between because they need to reset the stage and change the chairs because we can't have green chairs at the senior graduation or red chairs at the Hempstead graduation. So we'll all be hopeful for good weather. The makeup date will be the following day, and we have taken a few precautions that if it's just a light misty kind of a day, it's to be able to have it on the date and time as assigned, but do have a makeup date just in case.
I hope the band's going to do pomp and circumstance because that's been missing for two years.
We are bringing a lot of things back that were not in place because of COVID. So the advantage in some people's eyes is that COVID forced us outdoors to Dazzle Field, but it's a beautiful location. It's a fantastic place for graduation. So good weather, and I don't know the specifics of the music choices, but I know that there are a lot of things reincorporated this year.
I hope they bring back some tradition.
Well, that's with the music and the things that were sort of pushed, you know, because of COVID. We are now, the only thing that's really the same as last year is the fact that it's outside.
Good, great.
I like the fact that both schools do something that's patriotic in their program, either the pledge or the anthems or whatever.
Great. Like the music. Look forward to nice weather and everything going smoothly with that. Any other non-agenda items, board members? All right, then we're adjourned.